Good morning. We're calling this morning's meeting to order. The first thing is the approval of the agenda. Just a reminder that number three will be removed from the agenda.
I'll offer a motion to approve the agenda with the change.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebinger to approve the agenda with the change. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In the agenda, or the, we did have a thousand dollar donation. I want to recognize the awesome foundation of CAS in Clay County. They made a thousand dollar check to the West Central Regional Juvenile Center for educational material, and I thank them for their very nice donation for that. Okay, citizens to be heard. Doesn't look like we've got anybody in the audience. You got anybody?
We have nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
I move approval, Mr. Chairman.
One second.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Kravenoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from January the 10th.
Let's move.
And a motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Ebinger to approve the minutes from January the 10th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to item number two, permission to hire a vacant overnight juvenile worker position in the secure program. Mr. O'Donnell?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm here today to request permission to rehire a vacant position I have in the secure position in our overnight, one of our overnight counselor positions. I also request any backfill if it's filled internally.
Okay, this, you say it was in the maintenance position, or?
Our overnight position.
Overnight position, excuse me. Thank you. Any question on that, or? Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, James, how many openings have we got right now?
We have three full-time openings. This is the, this is one of the three. One of them is just being offered that got approved a couple of weeks ago. But our variable hour, we have over 30. It would be part-time.
Okay. I move for approval of this request.
Second.
You have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Campbell to approve the request for overnight juvenile work position. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion granted.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go on to number four. Proof of resolution 2023-05 for the merit system withdrawal certification and replacement of resolution 2022-42. Darren will take that one, I guess.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. This is a little bit of redundancy because if you recall, back in, I think it was December, we approved a resolution to get out of the merit system. And since that time, on January 10th, the Commissioner, the Department of Human Services granted our certification. So we were officially out of, out of the merit system at that point. But when I sent in the resolution that was signed in December, they said that it had to include a line in there about the Personnel Appeals Board, which is a little bit redundant because once you get approval and certification, that you will adhere to Minnesota statute thirty-five, three hundred, three seventy-five point five-six, that includes the Personnel Appeals Board piece of it. So what this resolution is doing is just replacing the resolution that was done in December. That replacement was two thousand twenty-two dash forty-two. And this resolution includes the language of establishing a Personnel Appeals Board. So I would request approval for this resolution, 2023 dash zero five, to replace resolution 2022 dash forty-two.
Dash forty-two?
Yes, I think that's what it is. This resolution that I'm asking to be approved is resolution 2023 dash zero five.
Right. Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I, this is something that I think has been in the works for actually a number of years, and I think got laid, put on the back burner for a while. But I think this is something that will be beneficial to all of our department heads moving forward too with the whole hiring process and with, with you guys. So I, this is the right thing to do. I would move that we, I'd move resolution 2023 dash zero five to replace previous resolution 2022 dash forty-two.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ebinger to approve resolution 2023 dash oh five to replace 2022 dash forty-two. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Next thing, I think we have to wait till nine o'clock for that. So we'll skip to number six. Energy legislation to impact waste management.
Mr. Chair, maybe I can take this one. Last week, we did a, an agenda addition to talk about legislation that was currently going through the House and Senate. It was, I believe it was House File Seven and Senate File Four at the time. And, and we expressed some concerns about language in there as it would pertain to the Prairie Lake Solid Waste Facility, which we are a member and part owner. And a lot of, that, things have moved quite rapidly. On the House File Seven, they did hold a hearing, I believe it was last Wednesday, and I believe Commissioner Mojo was online listening to that, as well as I and Steve. And I don't know if anybody, any of you others were able to listen in on that. And what Chris McCon, who was our director at Prairie Lakes, did testify regarding concerns with that facility and some of the language that had been in the original bill. And he, he, I think he did a really nice job expressing the concerns, how, how that energy bill was conflicting with MPCA and, and in terms of pollution standards from solid waste. And so it's been a dialogue that's been going on. I was able to reach out to Senator Kupchak. I know, I know he had reached out to Commissioner Ebinger, and, and I was able to have about a 10-minute phone call with Senator Kupchak. And he sent me some current language that's in the Senate bill. And under the Senate bill, and I did send this to our county attorney for review, I'm waiting to hear back, but it, but under the current Senate bill, the things that would be excluded would be solar, wind, hydroelectric, hydrogen, and biomass. And, and the biomass has a few line items included, and one of them says, "Energy recovery facility used to capture the heat value of mixed municipal waste or refuse derived from fuel from mixed municipal solid waste as a primary fuel." So, so Senator Kupchak is, is quite certain that the Senate bill exempts us from, from the energy language that we previously were worried we would fall under and cause us to close, basically. And the terms of that was in that AMC language, shuttered was the term that was used. So, and then, and then he did, and so I asked him, I said, well, so when we got on and were listening to that House hearing, there was some discussion about an amendment on the House file. Obviously, we didn't get a chance to read fully what that amendment was about. But in, I'll just read the sentence, two sentences that Senator Kupchak sent to me. He said, "Thanks for the call today." Below are the sections that deal with the energy recover and carbon credits. I checked the House bill, and they did include an amendment to exempt energy recovery facilities. And that was in that House amendment. So he's, you know, he seems confident there. As I read these things, you know, sometime, it's, you need a lawyer sometimes to, to understand what these things say. You know, I think I know what it says, but I am not sure I know what it says, type of a deal. But, but anyway, so, so I think right now, it's a little bit more comforting. And just to touch base, too, on the carbon credits, there is a deal in the works where certain entities will be able to sell carbon credits as a revenue source for those who have to find a means for not meeting the current, it's, I think it, it goes back to something like our credits for wetlands, wetland mitigation credits. You know, sometimes you have to be able to use, find wetland mitigation credits to complete the project. So I'm, I'm assuming this is like that. And Senator Kupchak actually felt that not only would we be exempt, but we might be eligible, we meaning Prairie Lakes Solid Waste, might be eligible for carbon credits in the future, which would be a positive thing from a, from a revenue standpoint. And I asked him, well, geez, how many carbon credits can we sell? And his reply was he didn't know. But, but anyway, so I know last week, it was kind of, we added, added it on there. It was kind of a, kind of a panic thing that we were dealing with because how fast things are moving right now in the, in the House and Senate chambers. And we wanted to make sure. But as of, as it stands right now, I'm more comfortable than I was a week ago in terms of, of what's in this language. And we'll have to continue to monitor it. I know Cory stays on top of it as well, too. And so we'll keep monitoring, and if something in that area changes, you know, and I don't know, Commissioner Mojo, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I, well, one, I think that this board can be really excited about the responses that we got from our elected leadership. I had a phone call with Senator Kupchak. I know that, I also had a phone call with Representative Joy. I think Commissioner Kravenoff had talked to Representative Keeler's office as well, and, and Senator Mark Johnson's office. And I think that, yes, we can be more optimistic about this specific bill going forward. But after pretty substantial conversation with Brian Martinson, who's our AMC, Environment and Natural Resources Policy Committee analyst, there's still some, some pretty gaping concerns in this bill still as stands in regards to what it will do with the additional landfilling capacity that will need to happen if, if Herc and the cities closes. That really does put some pressure on all of us. And then two, what will happen with the subsequent elimination of, of really 95% of what the market, or what a business market is. You know, here we are up in northwest Minnesota. Yes, we're a small player, but still rely on this larger, you know, entity to help. And then furthermore, I think there's some pretty big concerns with, with other public, smaller utilities. I mean, those small co-ops, there are some smaller co-ops in, in our area, and that doesn't necessarily address that. So yes, I agree, we're, we're in a better spot than we, we were with those bills a week ago. But the reality is, we're still producing carbon at that facility. And whether it's this week or in 2014, or 2040, which really isn't that far away, there will need to be some, some pretty large changes in how we, we operate. And granted, as we reiterated before, Clay County is invested in utilizing the resources to the best that we can while hers, you know, taking into account the environment. And, and just as we're, we're doing with Prairie Lakes, we're recycling, recycling and marketing a, a lot of material that reduces our need to landfill. And granted, it's, it's still a revolving door. But I think the need for us to continue to advocate and tell our story and tell the need and help educate, that's one thing that Senator Kupchak and Representative Joy told me. Don't assume that we understand the whole scope of it. Things are happening very fast and continue to reach out to us. So the more Cory and, and staff and us as commissioners can lobby to what the needs are, I think the better.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, when, when we tuned into that House hearing, you know, this, the, the way this was moving so fast, I thought it was pretty much, it was, I thought it was pretty much a bill that surrounded just municipal waste facilities. And I didn't, I didn't realize the extent of where this was and how it deals. I mean, it deals far more, like Commissioner Mojo said, with how it's going to impact small co-ops, XL Energy, and all these major, these are the electrical producers that, that, that basically have a source of electricity that goes to the grid. And all of those things, according to this policy, will need to be carbon-free by 2040. All of those areas will need to be carbon-free. And that's, and again, I'm going based on this language here, an exemption to that would be biomass for solid waste. Because I think they also know that, or they're, they're figuring it out based on maybe some education, that if they, if we can no longer burn that waste, and our, our other alternative is to put it back in our landfills, the methane gas that they produce is significantly worse. And so I, you know, I, you know, I, I did hear one comment in there that there was somebody who actually felt that we could go 100% waste-free too at some point in time. And I thought that was, to be honest with you, quite a pipe dream. But.
Well, anybody else, any other comments? Well, I want to thank Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo and for staying in contact with our legislators and keeping us up to date on that waste management thing. All right. I think we'll go into committee reports. You got something to report, Dave?
Yes, I do. I had a pretty busy week. Okay, on the, Wednesday, or Tuesday, the 17th, myself and Commissioner Kravenhoff, County Administrator Larson, and with Rory Buehl and Kathy McKay, ongoing discussion looking at forming a community partnership regarding opioid discussions that we've been having. That is an ongoing process. Later that day, myself and Commissioner Mojo, along with a number of individuals from the local law enforcement, city, Morehead City Attorney, probation courts, our county attorney met with, in law enforcement from the Sheriff's Office in Morehead PD, met with Judge Rosenfeld, discussed the possibility of forming a DWI court. That also is an ongoing process, very much going to involve setting up a model along the lines of what Otter Tail County and some other jurisdictions have been, are doing in the state, and seeking grant funding to assist with the, after we've come up with basically a plan, come up with funding to support such an endeavor. Again, that's going to be another ongoing project. Thursday, the 19th, virtually attended the Suicide and Substance Prevention Coalition meeting. Bob Kudzie of Minnesota Department of Health presented information from Minnesota Student Survey regarding mental health. There's been a decline in student mental health since 2019. It's coincided with what they found to be unusual, is a decline in reported substance use and sexual activity. Usually, the thought is that all of these things would, would decline in unison. There's an increase in anxiety, depression, ACES, which is adverse childhood experiences, both in the state and Clay County, with a marked higher indication, or higher self-reporting coming from the responding students that were female. We also discussed extension one year with the state for Minnesota Public Health Grant that we've got for suicide prevention. Hundred thousand dollars is still in the fund, and they want another year to spend it. Later that day, I attended the West Central Regional Juvenile Facility Meeting, reviewed the 2022 statistics and the budget. Budget won't be improved until March. Approved a food service contract. It's the same company that is servicing the jail, and they're using the correctional facilities kitchen for the preparation and distribution of food to both facilities. Also, had a, had an open discussion regarding some of the overtures from other jurisdictions wanting membership in the West Central. We're going to proceed with caution on that. A lot of these other facilities are realizing that there are no facilities in the state, or very few facilities, for kids suffering from mental health issues and kids that demonstrate violent behavior. And they see our membership, having access to this facility, and they want that. But we have to keep in mind, it will be where they send their most labor-intensive individuals. And we need to be sure that we keep the facility available to the 10 members that we've already got. Discussed the state of juvenile programs in the state, a lot of that revolving around violence, some of the legislation that's coming through that doesn't necessarily acknowledge the problems that exist in these facilities and workforce issues. Also, the, the director's response to working with their professional group, the MMJDA, and when state executives and legislators contact him, he wanted to know what the flow of, what, what, what he could openly discuss and what he'd need to run through the board. We have a lot of faith in Mr. O'Donnell, and we discussed kind of how we'd like the information flow to go on those. And again, later, later that day, I attended the Lake Agassy Regional Library Finance Committee, and we voted and forwarded the budget to the full board, 3.6 million. Approved authorized financial, designated funds and financial institutions. That all went to the meeting that followed after that, which was a meeting of the full board. We welcomed three new trustees to the board and administered the oath, approved the budget, discussed pending legislation. On Friday, the 20th, I attended the intergovernmental retreat, which most of us have, have attended. Derek LaPointe from Downtown Morehead, Inc., Sherry Larson from Morehead Business Association presented at that, along with Shannon Foole and her staff from the chamber, discussing workforce. I really enjoyed Kurt Zeller's presentation on working with state leaders. At that point, I had to leave to attend my next meeting. But the subsequent, or the remainder of the meeting, I'm sure one of the other commissioners can, can address. I left there and went to a joint meeting of the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC and the Chamber's executive boards. We discussed the future of both organizations and the Fueling Our Future Initiative in light of recommendations from consultants that we had working on it for the last year, which Casey Steinbacher and Ted Abernathy with Economic Effectively, they came up with a list of recommendations that we could choose from. It's going to be an ongoing discussion. There is a, in the initial Fueling Our Future Proposal, there was a deadline for either funding it or, or not, or discontinuing it, which ends at the end of this year. The, the sunset of that is in place, and there are a number of things that both organizations are looking at to determine whether this is going to be an ongoing project or not. One of the represent, a couple of the recommendations simply deal with how the interaction between the chamber and the EDC will be on a regular basis and to include a Fueling Our Future Initiative. So all those things are going to be considered and worked on by staff of both, both organizations. That completes my report.
You were a busy man last week.
It was a busy week.
Paul, you got something?
Thank you. Just to piggyback a little bit with a couple of things Steve said, but going back to last Tuesday, 17th, I too was part of that conversation, as he mentioned, for the opioid discussion and having that larger community engagement. We'll keep following up on that. Another discussion will be coming later today for, along with the Red River Recovery Group. That afternoon, I joined in with the Adult Mental Health, LAC. We had a very good discussion of mental high, mental crisis responsiveness. And it was, it was good to hear how the team out of Fergus Falls that works with it, how our local more police work with responses and just good information in that group. Has a lot of nonprofits in it and other groups that work toward that, mental, mental health. It was interesting, again, a lot of it moves toward suicide prevention and, and, you know, the, the pressure on older adults in that group. So on the 18th, I went to my first Clay Historical and Cultural Society meeting. Enjoyed that. I'm fairly familiar with it. And just knowing my background and my family are lifelong Clay County people and early homesteaders in 1872. So it was fun to be having a discussion about the beginnings of Clay County. Also, the main points of their business was approving their 2023 budget. It did pass, and a huge thank you to Clay County for their input of about $208,000, which is about a third of their budget. So we're a big piece of what they do. They had approved a strategic plan in 2022 that goes through 2026. And they're just, again, getting, moving forward what the plan of attack is over the next, over the next year toward that plan that they had approved. I'll give further reports on that as that moves on. And then I just want to make mention their newest exhibit, which is supposed to start this week. I think they're, they just told me it was the week of the 23rd. And new exhibit in there, photos that Mark Peel and Marcus have put together of Morehead, beginning in 1872 and going through 1969, before urban renewal took place in, in Morehead. and going through 1969, before Auburn Renewal took place in Morehead. So, I did catch about what they had up at that point, and I would encourage people to stop by and take a peek of what Morehead looked like over those years, and of course, they're very talented people that put those presentations together, and maybe they'll be around to answer questions. The following day, I was at the, my first MetroCog meeting in a number of years. Commissioner Mojo was part of that also, and again, I'll just, one point, and maybe Commissioner Mojo would elaborate more on these others, having more background than I, but they made an amendment to the tip, and I forgot that acronym. What is it?
Transportation Implementation.
Thank you. And anyway, there is a grant in the making, coming through the federal government that's going to, toward that plan, going to bring $106,000 to Morehead, so it's a big deal. Then there was a quick review of the Bicycle Possession Plan, which I hope we all utilize, and it's a wonderful thing to have in Morehead. A review of the, and of the ITF's Intellectual Transportation System Plan, and then also a brief review of, this one maybe had more depth for us, on the RFP toward the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which takes us out to 2050, and there was a $400,000 budget for that, so maybe you want to speak to that. Anyway, that's what I have, so.
Okay. Justin, you set to go?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go into the bid opening for the removal of the North Broadway Bridge. Obviously, we must have got a few bids in.
So, this bid opening is for the removal of the North Broadway Bridge. It's a joint project with MinDOT and the City of Fargo. So, we did receive one bid. It is complete with a bid bond in the amount of 5%. And I guess first, the engineer's estimate is $341,300.0. And the one bid we did receive is from Redstone Construction LLC. Their bid is $849,941.0. Eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and zero cents.
Justin, do you think the timing of removal is challenging?
So, in talking to, SRF did the plans for us, and they thought that winter was the best time to remove a bridge on the Red. Ultimately, we would have liked to open in December, but we were waiting on a permit from North Dakota that we just received last week.
So, we just got the one bid?
One bid, yep. So, I guess what I would like to do is I'd like to take this number, review it with both SRF, City of Fargo, and MinDOT before, I guess, offering any sort of recommendation, just to see where our numbers came in at, and if there's anything we can do to try to lower that cost. And I guess if we were to eventually approve it, just make sure that there is bridge bonding available for our share.
Yeah, thank you. That's, I think that's the correct route to take here, and I know, I know in light of this, there's, I think there was some discussions amongst the City of Fargo, just on not tearing down of the bridge, but how they're going to replace it, but I think it, this might be a good, good time for us to talk about the position that we've had on the replacement of that bridge, and certainly, you know, we had even commissioned a study amongst our Clay County residents about would they like to see that, and there was overwhelming support that yes, they'd like to see a bridge replaced. However, they, you know, they, they did talk about not at any cost.
Right.
And, you know, so, you know, I think the position, and this maybe goes to help Paul a little bit, being new on the board here, is that, that, you know, that, that bridge is a joint ownership between the City of Fargo and Clay County, and now that, you know, that goes back to many, many years ago, before that area was even within the city boundaries of Morehead. And so, we've, we've often said now, now that that's annexed into the city, we should at least be, it still is our county road and go there, but I, it's important for us to always be keeping the city in the loop on that. But the overriding thing that's important, the message that I think we need to make certain of, is that any, any type of whatever is determined to be replaced, and I know the City of Fargo is having that discussion of what they'd like to see, we are limited on this side to what MinDOT and the State of Minnesota will allow for bridge bonding dollars. And so, that, you know, if they're, if they're talking about some $20 million bridge over there, I don't know that that's going to meet the criteria from MinDOT.
From everything I've gotten from MinDOT, they would support it at the elevation that it was currently at.
Okay, and so, that's kind of.
Yep.
And, and of course, then, it would still have to receive the bridge bonding dollars, but that would be, that'll be part of the process in replacing it to.
Correct.
Secure those funds.
Yep.
But I, you know, I think it's important is, there's some, it's in the media today, and it was last night, and I think it's important that everybody understands that that is a joint bridge project. I know that, I think I've heard the mayor say in the past that they are also looking at some federal monies for their, for a portion of their share. If that's the case, that's great, but.
The article I read this morning, and it is in Fargo STIP, I believe they have like 5.4 million for the bridge, but they have quite a bit of approach work on their side because their road is failing, so.
Right.
It's not just the bridge work that they have.
Well, this is, this is a little bit over the engineer's estimate here.
Little bit concerning, that's for sure.
Mr. J, I would move that we authorize our engineer to take this back to the City of Fargo, MinDOT, and North Dakota DOT, too, or is that not?
No.
Okay, for review and recommendation on how to proceed.
Let's second that.
Okay, send you further discussion on that. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Krabinoff, to review this thing further. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, very good. With that, we'll go on to Jenny.
Thank you. Last week, I also attended with Commissioner Ebinger the DWI Court Implementation Conversation. Really want to extend my appreciation to Don Kautzman, who's the coordinator and Judge Rosenfeld, for bringing forth really documented need for why something like this would really succeed for the residents in Clay County. I am hopeful that observing how Otter Tail County and Becker County are implementing the program could possibly be utilized here, we're going to have continued conversation on funding sources and grant proposals and applications and, and really working with the courts in the state on how something like this could, could work. Currently, COVID really disrupted the courts, as we're all aware of that, and they're working through those disruptions, but think now would be a really good time to implement something of the sort. And as we've seen with our other specialty courts, they really, really change people's lives, and so if we can change people's lives in this capacity, it's really certainly worth the conversations. I also had conversations, as noted, with Representative Joy and Senator Kupac and Brian Martinson regarding the testimony for the House File 7 last week. The Senate will be talking about that bill this week. I know Commissioner, or I thought it was Wednesday. Anyhow, the discussions will continue. Commissioner Krabinoff is headed to New Commissioner's School this week, and we talked about connecting with legislators there, as I will be down there presenting at that school as well. Wednesday, I joined the Extension Committee, and Eddie Bernhardson and Jerry Arneson, James Cruz, Josh Choses, and Randy Nelson from Extension to discuss the nominations for the Farm Awards at University of Minnesota Extension in collaboration with the NDSU Harvest Bowl, talking about producers in our county that have gone above and beyond. We did have several nominations. The conversations will continue, and then awards will be given at the Clay County Fair on Sunday of the Clay County Fair and Farm Fest in August. I attended the State of the Cities Meeting last week. The title was Challenges, Opportunities, Growth, Priorities, and Innovation, and in having present question and answers and discussion with all five of the metro mayors, was really encouraged about the joint work that is continuing to happen on all fronts with those entities, and big shout-outs from all of them on the counties in which they work with, so that was exciting. There certainly are challenges, but it's through the, the joint collaboration, we can work through all of those challenges. So, they did livestream it, and it's available. If you go to the Chamber website, you can observe that. Thursday evening, I also attended the MetroCog Committee Meeting, as Commissioner Krabinoff alluded to, and working towards the retirement of Cindy Gray, our executive director this spring, and sometime in the next six months, Bob Welton from North Dakota DOT, who's really been a pillar of advice for that board. We're losing a lot of institutional knowledge, so making sure that they're able to share with us as much as possible before they leave. Did talk about the tip amendments, a lot of projects included in that project list, and there, one large item in Clay County is the transportation hub that will be by, over by Walmart, so that's really between Morehead and Dilworth. That's a conversation piece that's been included in those amendments. And then also, the implementation of autonomous vehicles and electric charging units and making sure municipalities are taking that into account in their long-term planning on how, what, obviously, there's a lot of challenges there, but making sure that entities are including it as part of the discussion. I know that I've had this conversation with our county engineer a lot, but it came up again, the future arterial roadway, the North Dakota-Minnesota crossing that doesn't exist yet. I think it's, is it 80th Avenue on the Minnesota side, south of the Convent Road? I know that once the diversion is done, that will really create quite a passway, a natural passway from North Dakota to Minnesota, so making sure you on the highway tracking continue to, to keep that on top of mind, I guess. Friday, I attended the Intergovernmental Retreat. Thank you to all of you that are on the Joint Powers Committee. I know a lot of planning goes into that. The City of Morehead School District was the host this year. Always appreciate hearing the updates, particularly the success stories. It was really exciting, as someone who's been on the CASC Clay Food Systems Committee before, to hear from the superintendent, Shannon Hunstead, from the DGF School District, to talk about how they're utilizing the local food and growers and producers to implement that in their lunch program. That's really exciting. That's been part of the work of the CASC Clay Food Commission for a long time. Good updates on engaging local businesses and having an innovative, innovative regional approach to our workforce challenges. As the continued conversations from the State of the Cities and our Intergovernmental Retreat, there really are challenges, as we all know, to those components, but it's through the continued dialogue that we start to formulate a plan on how to approach it and deal with it, and it's exciting to hear different stories from the other entities on how they're doing that. I also, at that meeting, had the opportunity to meet the new city administrator of Barnesville, Jeremy Cassett, who is local and is ready to hit the ground running for Barnesville, so that was exciting. Yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Committee Meeting in Fergus Falls. We had updates, the February annual meeting will be in person or a virtual option if you'd like. I know that Commissioner Gross has attended that in the past. You're all welcome to be at that. It's the last Monday in February. We do have a couple new commissioners that will serve in that capacity, both Otter Tail and Pope County will need to name that person. They are, we had good access indicators, which, as you recall, are the, the days for how many, the average days between a call or a referral and what the offering for an appointment is. That's really something that's been challenging in the past, but seems to be holding steady in the low two to four days, which is really, really good. There were days that we, or months where we had 30-plus days. They are toying with, well, they will be offering a paid internship for their chemical health assessments, really something that they're trying to do to offset the challenges in workforce, getting full chemical health, licensed chemical health providers. Hopefully, if they're able to cut down on what their workload is for the licensed, and it's not something they've done before, but because of the workforce challenges is something that they're wanting to implement. Did give an update, piggybacking off the conversation that Commissioner Krabinoff had had at his Mental Health Advisory Committee. Morehead Police will be embedding a practitioner for their mental health challenges and offset a little bit of what the, the mental health 24, what is, Mobile Mental Health Crisis Unit, excuse me, used to offer, and so they're working on, on what the hours and days will be for that, but it will be something that they will embed within the department. Because it's a practitioner level, that is a billable, a billable service, at this point, it's looking like it's going to be something that's boots on the ground, but I did have a conversation with them if that's something they, they would need a space for. I know in the conversations we've had with the Mobile Mental Health Crisis Committee and our Sheriff's Office and Morehead PD, they've talked about how challenging that is, particularly when you're outside trying to provide services to someone. So, I know, as we've talked about our Detox new building, that we do have some programming space, and maybe that's something that we can have further conversation on. And also, discussed the CDs, the investment CDs. Lakeland Mental Health finished the year with their best margins in four years, which is encouraging, encouraging. They've been able to put away some of those dollars into CDs. As I've reported before, they are in the process of expanding the Morehead Building, and it's because of the success of the margins and investments that they will not be, they will be self-funding all of it. So, it's always something that I appreciate, that they're not coming to us to ask for increases, particularly when this building will be expanding services in Clay County. And then I also attended yesterday, the, I think, the last meeting on site, don't jinx it here, for the Resource Recovery Campus. That trailer will be moving out shortly. A lot of wrap-up things, final touches on the facility. After the meeting, we did walk through the facility and, and really encourage as many members of the public to attend the ribbon-cutting and tours that are happening next Tuesday. That is something that Clay County and really Northwest Minnesota, I think, can be proud of. It's an enormous facility that will help us deal with resource, trash resources for years to come, but I did talk a little bit, there are some contingency dollars that are left, but as we've reported, we had an issue with Excel Energy getting the meter out there, and we were heating by alternative means, and so there will likely be a large propane bill that's coming, and we're thinking that that will kind of effectively wipe out those contingencies. But I believe that concludes my reports. But I believe that concludes my reports.
Okay. Evan?
Thank you. Thursday the 19th, we had the West Central Regional Juvenile Center meeting. I was able to attend a portion of it. Just a slight correction to what Commissioner Ebbinger reported. In terms of the 2022 budget, that, the budget was, when we talk about finalizing that, it basically, you know, it's finalizing the 2022 budget after Lori has an opportunity to make her year-end adjustments. The 2023 budget, of course, has already been approved, and then it's just a matter of going over and finalizing, finalizing that. James gave a report on the food service contract. And I think, other than that, I think Commissioner Ebbinger gave a good report on, on that, and I don't have any more to add on that. That same day, then I went to Lakes Country Service Cooperative in Fergus Falls. Several things were talked about. They, they talked about the number of entities that renewed their health insurance through them, and there was a few that left, but overall, they had a, a net gain in, in participants in the health insurance program through Lakes Country Service Cooperative. We got some legislative session updates in regards to what's important, and most of it has to do with school district issues as opposed to maybe county and city issues, but. And then we have the discussion about something that's here locally is the Yes Program in Moorhead. That Yes Program is, is funded through Lakes, Lakes Country Service Cooperative. That has really been struggling financially, and so there's a lot of discussions going on. And I believe we have a timeline of March. At our March meeting, we're gonna try to figure out what, what our solutions are. So there's discussions right now with Moorhead Public Schools, and I believe they're gonna be in touch with Shannon from DGF as well as others, what could become of that facility.
Friday, we had the Intergovernmental Retreat. That's been reported extensively by everybody. I, I too do like the updates that we get from every community. It's something that we've done for years and got away from it for a while, and, and back to it now. So it's, it was nice to hear of all of the different projects, both that were complete and what are in, in the pipeline. That can be beneficial to all of us here in Clay County. I too like Kurt Zeller's deal on how to deal with state legislatures. And then yesterday, we did have, hold, like Mr. Moshe said, it looks like it will probably be our final meeting of the construction project for the Recovery Facility. The final inspection is scheduled for February 2nd at 10:00 a.m. We're hoping then that that gives us our certificate of occupancy so that we can open on February 6th as planned. And we did tour the facility. Everything is really looking good. It's a little, quite a bit of cleanup work yet to do, but we are, we intend to hold our first SWAC meeting in that facility Thursday morning of this week. And so our people, our members of SWAC, who's Salt Waste Advisory Committee, who have played a large part in the planning of this process over the years, are gonna have the first opportunity to, to go in there and see it, which rightfully so, that they should, should have that. So we're looking forward to having them there on Thursday morning, and, and then our open house on the 31st, and we're, we'll be set to go. That concludes my report.
Okay. Last Tuesday, after the meeting, I went and, University of Minnesota, Randy Nelson was putting on an update of crops updates for the farmers in the county, so I attended that. Very interesting, well, they had Mark Peel there from the Historical Society, who's always very interesting to listen to, and he did put on another good program on steamboat navigation on the Red River, which was very interesting. They also talked to them about the weeds update, Palmer, Amara, it's coming, you know, it's, which is in Clay County too now, and they're talking how to take care of that stuff. And had an interesting program for the farmers there, as well attended there. And the other one I had was, well, I was at the Intergovernmental Retreat too, and I really want to thank the committee that put that on. I mean, you guys did a good job in bringing on some very interesting, talented conversations with those people, the presentations that they gave here. It was just, it was just a good meeting there. There again, it's interesting to see what, what our communities are doing, you know, really building, there's building going on in almost every community and good success stories there, and I appreciate hearing about that. And also, I mean, Shannon Foell and her group, Matt and Curtis, they really put on a good program, telling them what their, what their program is all about. It's always good to get knowledge on what is the Fargo-Moore Chamber Commerce doing, you know? What are they all about? They gave a good presentation there and appreciated that. And that's what I have.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, go ahead.
Can I, can I just go back to my report for a minute too on the, on the West Central Regional Facility? When we talked about the, the budget for 2022 budget, James did report that it does look like we are going to come close to meeting what we had anticipated, and that is revenues over expenditures for the year 2022 of roughly $1 million, and it's, that's similar to what 2021 was. And, and the beauty of that then is it does allow us to access those funds to keep the bed prices stable, and so those dollars could be used then as we prepare for 2024. So the 1 million revenues over expenditures from 2021 helped us keep our 2023 numbers down. We're always a year behind on, on that. So, so things, things are looking really good there. And again, it goes to the programming of that facility and the excellent work that's done there. And we have people from all over the state wanting to use our facility for that purpose. And, and I think we, there's, there's, we should be proud of what we have going on here in that regard.
Okay. Steve?
I think, Mr. Chair, last Tuesday, I participated, participated in the opioid meeting. That's been covered by Commissioner Ebbinger and Commissioner Krabinoff. I would just provide an update. I've tried to keep the board updated with ongoing litigation with the opioid, opioid funding. We did receive notification that there are five new companies that have settled, Tiva, Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, and El, Elragon. And so we had, if you recall, this board back in 2021, were asked to join in as part of the settlements, and then you also were asked to sign a memorandum of agreement to participate that, in that. The Attorney General's Office is in the process of capturing all the additional companies that, that have settled. And so here in the next few, month or so, we'll probably be back before this board in consideration of, of joining on with these five settlements, and then we would have to sign a new memorandum of agreement. We also were notified that the Mallencroft settlement has come through. We're gonna be receiving our first settlement dollars probably at the end of this month. Minnesota's portion of that was much smaller than the original Jansen, Jansen, but were about 10 to 14 million dollars over the next eight to 10 years. So Clay County's first payment at the end of the month will be right around $14,000. So that's in addition to the other distributors. We received the last 2022 about $67,000, and our first payment this year, our payment for this year, was right around $71,000. So that's, those funding are, one, this board has put, put about a million dollars of those, of the funding towards our substance use facility, and part of our opioid discussion is also determining how those dollars can best impact our community. On the 17th, also had a series of, or conversation with Dan Molly and a series of shared interests between the city of Moorhead and, and the county. On the 18th, we had a Strive for Excellence meeting. Majority of that discussion was on a spring retreat. I think you've all received an invitation for that. It's going to be on April 20th, in addition to our department heads. It's also gonna be an invitation extended to our supervisors, and our focus there is gonna be on leadership. On the 18th, we worked, continued to work to finalize the Resource Recovery Ribbon Cutting Ceremony, for the ceremony next Tuesday. The, the, I participated that evening. It's been addressed with the testimony for House File 7. Again, I think that really want to commend the board for their swift actions, both with the letter and also your individual reach-outs over that short period of time to get the information that was needed to make the best decision for the county. On the 19th, we had a MCC JPA prep meeting. We are scheduled to meet this Thursday. And just of note, that meeting has been shifted due to a quorum issue to Friday morning at 8:00 a.m. The, the notifications have gone to the media and also are in our SpotLook and Facebook page. On the 19th, we had a department head evaluation. And 20th, I participated in the Intergovernmental Retreat. I would just note that we are planning to meet with Shannon Foell and her staff as a, as a management group to look at the Ignite Program and the platform and how that can, we could better utilize that to recruit employees here at the county. Yesterday, participated in the Resource Recovery Owners Meeting. That's been covered. Again, excited that we're getting here at, to the end, and thank construction engineers, Burns &amp; Mack, for, for their work. Yesterday afternoon, again, talked to Darren on a human resource matter, and I think just the next Tuesday, we do not have board, but that doesn't mean we don't have a busy day. We, they're at 1 o'clock that day. The Sheriff's Department is holding an oath of office and award ceremony at 1 o'clock, and again, our, our ceremony for ribbon cutting for the Resource Recovery Facility will be at 2:30 that day. And lastly, just would make note, back in October of this year, this board sent a letter of support on behalf of the Historical and Cultural Society to the Nat, excuse me, for, for consideration of National Registry of Historic Places for the District Number Three School District Enroll Log. And we received notification today that, that they were awarded that national recognition. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Just gonna make comment at the Legislative Conference on February 21st. I know I registered for that, but since then, I've had a surgery coming up, and I don't know, what's the, we'll have to find out what the latest point is.
Today. I think she sent that out yesterday, didn't she?
Okay, because I don't know what my condition will be, so will I have to cancel out on that or not? Okay. Good, if you can find out for me, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify, there was a meeting on that Senate file for yesterday, a meeting scheduled, but I was also referring to the one that's tomorrow. There is another one at 12:30. So there's two different ones this week.
Okay. Anything else? Uh, or adjourned?